Welcome, I'm Tim Skoggins, Chairman of the Shasbury Select Board, and I am calling this meeting of the Shasbury Select Board to order at 6:30 on Monday, December 18, 2017. First off, I need to check, does any member of the Board have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
I'm on the board of the Bennington Rescue Squad.
Okay, that's worth pointing out, I don't believe that...
No, not in the conference, just...
Causes a financial conflict of interest, but it's worth reminding people that we did intentionally put you there. So, that's a no from everybody?
No.
Okay. Approval of minutes, we have minutes that were circulated... For December 4th, our last meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion to approve the minutes as circulated by Art?
Second.
Seconded by Ken. Are there any additions or corrections?
I didn't find any. Haven't found any.
I believe I had a couple of typos, oh, and this is not the... Oh, here it is. Bring up the TMS version. I found how to spell our fire chief's name. There was just a slight typo here, Whitman moved to second, Whitman moved, and then Ken Harrington second, spelling of evacuation there, just a couple of typos. Oh, and Lynn, spells her name L-I-N. So without objection, we'll accept those corrections. No more discussion, all in favor of approving the minutes as circulated with corrections? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Standing.
Okay, you were not there?
Right.
Okay, so that vote is approved 4-0-1. And that's the minutes for December 4th. So, you are going to want me to send you a corrected copy of these?
Yeah, we did send you a corrected copy.
Next up, warrants. First off, I have payroll warrant number 12, in the amount of $24,931.29.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Art?
Second.
Seconded by Ken. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So payroll warrant number 12, in the amount of $24,931.29, is approved 5-0-0. Next, I have check warrant number 18, in the amount of $63,000.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Tony?
Second.
Seconded by Art. This is the community appropriations that were approved by the citizens last year in one package. Does anybody need to hear those recited?
No, they're on the ballot.
Okay. All in favor of approval, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So, check warrant number 18, in the amount of $63,000, is approved 5-0-0. And I have check warrant number 19, in the amount of $19,411.91.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Tony?
Second.
Seconded by Art. These are property tax refunds for people who overpaid their taxes, or double paid their taxes, usually that happens because they forgot they have it in escrow and we get it from the bank.
What usually happens is they get, they are late filers, and then they, their escrow company has only the original bill, and they'll forward the second bill to the escrow company, so the escrow company pays the higher amount, and then they're getting the refund for the difference.
Okay.
That seems to be what's driving it most of the time in these cases.
I've forgotten if I had that moved.
So moved.
Moved by Tony? Seconded by Art. So again, that is check warrant number 19, $19,411.91 for property tax refunds. Discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So, check warrant number 19 is approved 5-0-0. And check warrant number 20, in the amount of $33,015.46.
So moved.
Moved by Tony?
Second.
Seconded by Art. Major items on this one, $2,700 to American Rock Salt, $4,400 to Blue Cross Blue Shield, $5,000 to Bennington Regional Commission, $1,900 to Business Card Services, that's probably...
That's the credit card, that consisted of buying $883 for the pay-to-throat stickers, we had to reorder the stickers for the year, 25,000 stickers. $597 for stamped envelopes for the clerk's office, several cases of those. $250 for Vermont Truck and Bus Association for the drug testing, mandatory drug testing. And $156 for election, poll worker food on election day.
There is $3,500 to MSK Engineering, the garage stuff, I'm sure?
Yes.
$1,400 to Shasbury Fire Company.
That's the pay, their credit card for nozzles, they had to buy, and they needed them quick, so they bought them on their credit card, so we're reimbursing them for the credit card.
Okay. $6,600 to TAM, $1,700 to VRS Sales?
That's more fire equipment.
More fire equipment, okay. And those are the items over $1,000. Any more discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So, check warrant number 20, in the amount of $33,015.46, is approved 5-0-0. Are there any announcements? As per our personnel policy, I'm announcing again this week that we have several open positions, currently open positions on the Planning Commission and the Developmental Review Board. There are also expiring positions on those boards, so we would like it if citizens would raise their hand to serve their town in this capacity. If you're interested, all we need from you is a letter of intent, an email is fine, or a phone call to the town offices, to the town administrator indicating your willingness to serve and to be considered. I also want to announce that the Planning Commission and the Select Board, whoever can make it, will be touring the about-to-be-finished Shire's Housing Project on Route 67. This is scheduled just moments ago for Wednesday at 1:00. I know you're probably working, I tried to schedule it later, but the workmen there can't schedule it any later than 3:30, so 1:00 Wednesday. And that will get warned by David tomorrow, has a full meeting. Are there any public comments?
Tim, for the order, just because Lynn is here, Lynn is number 15 on the list, I don't know if we want to move her?
Yeah. Without objection, Lynn Sternberg is asking us to consider a proclamation on renewable energy. I had scheduled it for the end, but she is here early, and she probably would like to have that discussed now, rather than at 8:45, if that's fine with everyone?
No objection.
Okay, all right. Lynn, if you want to come up, we'll talk about your petition.
And whereabouts, to which place?
This one right here is the suit of honor. So Lynn approached me with, in asking us to consider proclamation that originates, I believe, with the organization 350 Vermont, an environmental organization, asking towns to endorse the state's comprehensive energy plan, which seeks to achieve 90% of the state's energy from renewable sources by the year 2050. It goes on to ask the town to protect the town lands from fossil fuel infrastructure, denying easements or agreements for any pipelines crossing town lands, asking us to urge weatherizing of town buildings and schools, enlisting state support to install rooftops solar on town and school buildings, and other initiatives to improve residents' quality of life, while helping us reduce overall energy use. I would also mention that I circulated to the Board some other language endorsing renewable energy. And let me just bring that up, I apologize, let's see if I kept it. No, I'm going to have to bring up my email to remember the language there. And I apologize for having to hunt and pack. What I suggested was some alternative language. Maybe I should let Lynn speak to hers first, before I get into what I was suggesting.
Well, I think it's, as you say, straightforward on the petition, basically asking the Vermont towns within their own Select Board and the procedure of the following through on Town Meeting Day, and of the following year, 2018, March 7, that they would have an Australian ballot, and the town voters would come and make a decision if they were supporting but the incentive for the resolution for 90% renewables by 2050. And this would be the effort to pursue, beginning now in 2018. And this is a development that has been originated by 350.org, and now 350 Vermont, and many states within the entire nation are pursuing this. And so in this case, we can continue the process by enlisting townspeople to sign petition, requesting an Australian ballot vote on the resolution of the renewable energy 90% by 2050. Or we could have the members of the Select Board come together to have something in addition, or something that they would think would be pertinent to address this important need that we have for energy.
Okay. Lynn and I have been kind of going back and forth about what exactly she's asking procedurally is, that she's asking us to endorse this petition. If we choose not to do that, citizens still have the option of collecting the right number of signatures, it's 5%, and I forget what number that is for us, that can then have that placed on the ballot and endorsed by the voters. And I have my own thoughts on that, but I think I'd like to see what the Board is, Board's inclination is about the petition.
First of all, I think this is something to point, has the Planning Commission come up with an energy program, with an energy statement?
Yes, and that's kind of where my statement is coming from.
Okay.
So if you like, I can explain my reasoning for...
Well, I... I would not vote for what's on the screen right now, as a select one, I just don't think it's, it's too, I've got some problems with it, but I do think we've got to the cognizance of energy and that sort of stuff, but I just, I wouldn't vote for that.
Okay.
But she has the, but certainly have the option of putting it on the ballot.
Sure.
Okay?
Sure.
I would agree with what Art says, I don't think that you could get the town in a position of allowing things like gas pipelines and infrastructure for dispense or use fossil fuels, because number one, you may not make the 90% anyway. 90% of, most of your fossil fuels in the state right now is used by automobiles, and so I don't think that is going to work, and you can't, I don't see how you can lock yourself into something that you, that I don't think is of interest to the town.
Tony?
We're a long ways away. 2050.
I was gonna share whether you wanted it as a ballot or a resolution during Town Meeting.
It would be a ballot.
Yeah, I think it should be up to the voters.
Then I would go with the 5% and give the signatures to have it placed on. I wish it were sooner, I'm thinking 2030, but...
There's a lot of things on there I don't agree with, but yeah.
I did a Google search, right now the state of Amah only generates 35% of its own power in the state of Amah. Everything else is bought from either out of state or from Canada. And it was in 2014 that the state of Amah shut down the Amah Yankee, which was, I think it was either a quarter or a third of all the power generated in the state of Amah. So if you go, do away with, as an example, if you get away with all gasoline-powered cars, where are you going to replace that power? If you go to electric, you don't have it.
My opinion is, I endorse the goals of the state's energy plan and 350 Vermont for the United States. My only problem is, I don't know that Vermont can go alone. I've seen some of the details of how, at least some people, like our Regional Planning Commission, thinks that we're going to get to that 2050 goal, and at least half of that is in conservation, which means we'd be using half the energy that we're using today, and I believe that the only way you get that level of conservation is through price. People don't voluntarily stop driving a lot, they stop driving a lot, and gas is real expensive, and if Vermont tries to go alone in that regard, I fear people will just go elsewhere.
Well, the problem too is that right now, and we're still in the infancy of renewable energy, and it's very expensive. I mean, costs have come down, but not all that much.
Vermont is one of the highest prices for energy in the state and the country. I did a Google search on that today, too.
Art was asking about the Planning Commission's position on this, and it has been talked a lot about, talked about a lot in the Planning Commission lately because of the 2050 Comprehensive Energy Plan, and because of the recent push to have towns adopt, to add energy plans to their town plan. The Planning Commission thought long and hard about it, and decided that in terms of an energy plan, the main purpose of town energy plans these days is to control the siting of renewable energy, of where it goes, and it's the position of the Planning Commission that Shasbury does not have any strong opinions about where solar should and should not go, or wind should and should not go. Which, if I may, when Lynn came to me, what I felt was that the Board would be in a good position at this point to state what our positions are relative to those things specific to our town plan. And the language that I suggest that the Select Board adopt is, "The town of Shasbury supports the transition of the US economy from fossil fuels to renewable sources of energy, such as wind and solar. We welcome the siting of renewable energy infrastructure in our town as allowed by the town plan and as dictated by the free market. We do not seek to restrict the siting of renewable energy infrastructure any further than is allowed by other types of building and industry."
I would rather the Planning Commission come up with a statement, and then we adopt it as the Select Board adopted, as opposed to Planning Commission having something, Select Board having something, and then all that sort of stuff. There's nothing wrong with that, I just think, is that what, I think it should be the Planning Board that does this.
This is, language has been circulated through the Planning Commission and the Regional Planning Commission.
Is the last sentence necessary? Doesn't that say the same thing over again?
Yeah, it kind of spells out what is in our town plan, is that we're not making specific restrictions on deciding on renewable energy, which is really the point of a lot of energy plans and town plans relative to energy these days.
Okay.
I think that my main concern is, I'm all for saving energy and doing everything we can to do all that, but Vermont seems to always be in the position of, we got to be first for everything. And if you want to use a good example, look at that PFOA standard they got. We're four and a half times what everybody else in this country is, and look where it's got us. If we get too far ahead on this energy stuff and not do it the right way, we're going to put the whole state at a further disadvantage than it already is.
Well, countries have gone bankrupt, such as Greece, and I'm trying to go green, didn't work out so well. So, do we want to...
I'm asking for us to adopt this resolution.
Okay. Then Lynn still put something on the ballot?
Lynn, if she still, if she was not satisfied with this, could still put something on the ballot. I still think it's worthwhile for us to state our position relative to the siting of wind and solar.
And you feel that this is the voice of the Planning Commission?
I do.
Okay.
Can I inquire, how, the town plan at present, when was it last put in place, the most recent town plan?
2014.
In 2014, so four years later, you think everything is ready to be amended, or you wait five years, or do you have a set period of time where...
Every five years, it's amended. Well, if no one else will, I will move that the Select Board adopt this resolution.
I'll second.
Seconded by Art.
This one here, the one you wrote.
The one I wrote. Seconded by Art.
At least open up for discussion.
All right. Discussion?
I'm still with Lynn, I'm still wondering what we're going to do with Lynn. Lynn needs an answer, you know, I mean, this is a whole separate item, isn't it?
I believe the answer to Lynn is, it certainly sounds like the consensus is, no, we're not going to adopt that resolution.
So that's, okay. So go with the...
The resolution that was put forth by 350.org.
Correct.
And if Lynn doesn't think that this is strong enough, then she can get petition.
Correct.
At the present time, I would agree, the towns of Manchester, our neighbors Arlington, Bennington, over in the east part of state, Rattleboro, up in the north country, Burlington, they've all endorsed this.
Any more discussion on this resolution? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? One opposed? Abstaining? So the motion is agreed to by a vote of 4-1-0. And just to restate, "The town of Shasbury supports the transition of the US economy from fossil fuels to renewable sources of energy such as wind and solar. We welcome the siting of renewable energy infrastructure in our town as allowed by the town plan and as dictated by the free market. We do not seek to restrict the siting of renewable energy infrastructure any further than is allowed for other types of building and industry." And Lynn, the answer to your question, as I indicated, is no, the Select Board is not inclined to adopt a 350 Vermont resolution on renewables, but you are certainly entitled to seek the required signatures and have it placed on the ballot.
And then we would proceed as soon as possible.
Yes, the deadline for all of that sort of thing, I believe, is January 25.
Yes, it's mid-January. Check with me tomorrow, I don't know the date by the top of my head, but it's mid-January.
Okay. Well, I have a deadline of January 25.
Yeah, we have to have everything in to be done, but I believe petitions have to be submitted to the clerk earlier. But actually Lynn, if you stop down, Marlene's, no, she just left. But if you call tomorrow, we'll give you the date for the petition being...
Sounds good, yeah. I think that, especially since I've gone to various meetings and became acquainted with other members and residents of the towns I just mentioned, I like to feel that we can pursue this as well. And as far as the resolution that you presented, I think that is by all means a step in the right direction, and we welcome it. But I think at this point in time, I think our Shasbury residents should be thoughtful of what is happening with their neighbors, and let them have the option to see this resolution and respond to it in the way they see. resolution and respond to it in the way they see fit.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Treasures report. Melanie Dexter.
Hello. I sent a new version of this.
Yes, it's, the updated one should be in there, too.
Where did you put it?
Right in the drop box. It should be, I took out the old ones, put in the ones, so...
Okay. I did not look this afternoon. See if I can bring this up.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I had a version from Friday, but I was so frantically busy today that I thought you might want to see what I was up to. So, let's see, the big things that have happened is I've got the garage bond finally in our books, and we've done our first transfers in both directions. So, we, I know how to do it now, and we've got a process in place for transferring from the bond bank to our bank account and then back to the general fund to replace the money that we're writing checks on. So, you'll see that when we go farther down. But I also, oh yes, you see that where it says inter-fund transfer garage due to general fund? That was paying the first bills that have come due on the garage. That other inter-fund transfer is just cleaning up some due-to-do froms that were left over from that money that needed to be paid back to the general fund from checks we've been writing on the other funds. We got some state pilot money. Yeah, that's about it. But if you go down a little bit farther, then you'll see where the good stuff is. So, I did the town appropriations there, you can see. So, those have been taken care of. Those were what were voted on in the last town meeting. And then the balance of school tax there is that 1.18. That's to, that's what we owe to the, to Shasbury School from our, the taxes that we took in in November. And there's also a very large check that I wrote for the, our portion of taxes due to Mount Anthony. So, that's in there with, that's why those dispersments are so huge. So, that cash balance there is our actual cash balance. It's the first time we've seen it this fiscal year that we really have.
Okay.
It's all the other money that was not really ours is no longer in there. Okay, then we look down a little bit farther, sort of, oh, I didn't update those. Those are left over from the fifteenth, so those don't reflect the things I did today. But you can see the garage bond there. That's including, it's not really that high anymore, because we did take out the transfer of about $90,000. If you look at the other one, the reserve one that I usually just breeze over, that'll show you all the stuff I'm talking about. If you look at the reserve fund spreadsheet, that was also in the drop box. There you go. So, you can see all the activity with the credits and debits. That's reflecting all of the, the credits for the most part are the town appropriations. So, that's what all those are. The debits include, like the $91,000 there is the money that was being sent back to the general fund to pay for the garage charges. The other stuff is just cleaning up the due-to-do from. So, that, you can see, that's a lot of activity there.
Uh huh.
But that's our, the ending balance is where we really are with that. And so, and that's with all of the community, I mean, not community, yeah, the town appropriations. Sorry, I said community and the town. Town appropriations are all in there now. So, that's our real, real amount for that, too.
Okay.
Let's see, I've been having some final dealings with Solomon and Powers. I think that just a couple more things came up, but I think we'll be getting our final report pretty soon. I know I say that every time, but I think we're really getting there. Let's see, what else is going on? Water was due last week, so that's been taking up a lot of my time, but those are, just the ones that are coming in now are overdue, so most of them came in on time. I think that's it.
Okay.
Any questions?
Municipal, you were going to do something with that or no?
Yeah, I haven't, this has been really crazy. I think that probably, I keep putting this off, but I think early in the year, or maybe even in the week between Christmas and New Year, when things are a little counter, I should be able to do that. Every time I think it's going to be a quiet time, it turns out I'm completely wrong, and I'm just forgetting that this is really a busy time of year. But yeah, I'll shoot for the, for the week between Christmas and New Year. That would actually be a good time. Anything else?
Thank you, Melanie.
Just to interject, I remember, Tony, you were the principal at MAU.
That's right.
And I didn't recognize you.
We get old.
No, I think it's the subject, but...
Yes. I remember you.
Do you want to move rescue ahead of roads?
You got a long road report?
No, I'm thinking of it now.
Okay, okay. Okay, without objection, we'll go ahead and talk to Bennington Rescue Squad now. Welcome, Forrest.
Yeah. Thank you, guys, for having us back. Joe, one of the last of you guys will notice Brian Pete is our chairman of our board of directors.
Brian, welcome.
Hello.
Would you like to plug in your computer?
I don't have a formal presentation.
Okay.
So...
I got a lot of files from you, so if you want any of them brought up, just let me know.
Gotcha. So, I had a quick, let me just pass those down. Because I came to you guys, well, it's been a year ago now, and it's only been a couple of months, I think, since I've been here last time, and gave you some data. I didn't, and only other than the questions I think that you and Joe asked, which I shared today, I thought I'd send them on Friday, but apparently I didn't. They're on the back of that sheet as well, some of the questions you guys had about Shasbury numbers.
Right.
I didn't make a formal presentation. But like when I came in here last year, we are still seeking per capita funding from all the towns that we serve. And one of the things that we're trying to focus on is trying to make sure that all the towns, that there's equality amongst the towns, where, you know, the folks in Woodford, folks in Shasbury, folks in Arlington are paying the same amount. There's not this, what some places get into is a huge disparity amongst what services, or what towns provide for their EMS services or their public safety services. We have done a bunch of work over the last year. We're not there yet. Part of our goal when we came to you guys last year was after a really intensive budgeting and planning process on our side to sort of get us, sort of get the ship right in the next, you know, two to four years, depending on what happens. And we're still on path to do that. Our budget is within a couple of percentage points to be in neutral, which is amazing. You know, when, a couple of years ago when I got here, I was handed a $750,000 operating loss budget, which is not sustainable. And then, oh shoot, lost my train of thought. And going forward, you know, our goal is to, this year we have not replaced any of our capital equipment. That was one of the strategies that our board took into account last year, until we could sort of wrestle and have this conversation with the towns about, you know, what's the best, what's the best method for us going forward. I sent you guys all the, every document that I could think of as far as financial statements the last five years, some budgets. I think there's our strategic plan in there somewhere, or you had it before, I believe.
Yeah, I pulled it off. I was reading it, so...
Tax record in there from 1974, I think.
Well, all that, yes, and I also included, I shared with Tim, Bennington changed their, I know you guys were wrestling last time, last meeting or meeting before last with your guys' appropriation process, which I know we're not in anymore, but Bennington changed theirs, and they had some new documents and documentation requirements, and I shared that with you guys just to have a reference, and gave you all the same stuff I gave to Bennington, so some of it might be mislabeled, but it's all very relevant information. So, with that, I'll take any questions, or we can dig in anything that you guys want, or...
Well, I'll just mention that since you came to us a year ago, you did open our eyes about your funding and about how we had been, you know, how much we've been paying relative to your cost and cost of other towns around us. We did recognize that EMS services are an important service for the town. We moved your funding from community appropriations to a line item in the budget. Last year, we upped it, I think by a factor of three to $7,500. This year, we currently have doubled it again to $15,000 in our current budget.
Oh, very nice.
Propose. Propose.
That's the proposal, yes. The budget is not finalized.
Yes, and my budget's not finalized until Wednesday either, in those case scenarios. I know all about that.
As I indicated, further recognizing the importance of this, we ask Tony to step forward as a member of your board of directors to show that we take the commitment of providing EMS services seriously and to be in a position to get the best information about your operations and how to serve our town.
It is a struggle right now. Probably, there's a lot of things in the air, as you guys probably know. The status of the Affordable Care Act is troublesome for folks like us, especially in the healthcare industry. We won't get hit immediately, depending on how quickly that's this handled. Usually EMS agencies are 12 to 18, sometimes 24 months behind on hospitals and physicians get hit, but they don't leave us out. They make sure to bring us along with any cuts or anything else as it sort of trickles down. This new tax, as a nonprofit, this proposed tax plan and some of the, I would call them disincentives for charitable donations, is slightly concerning as well, because, you know, we don't make a great deal of money from donations, but it is a nice little thing to help offset capital expenditures and other things. The, I was talking with David about before the meeting, some of the things are out of our control, you know, some of the, he was asking about some of our income dip from 15 to 16. And there's a bunch of factors in there. So, you know, when a local hospital brings in providers, so they just brought in an orthopedic group here a few months ago, if you look at the number of orthopedic cases that we're taking now to Albany or Rutland or Dartmouth, that decreases, because now those are getting handled in Bennington. On the non-emergency side of things, the insurance business itself is getting very, is scrutinizing very heavily medical necessity. So, years ago, they would call us and we would come and take you and move you and follow the processes. We can't do that anymore. We have to make sure that you, not in a 911 setting, in a non-emergency setting. So, if you, you call us, if you're, if you don't meet medical necessity, if a doc won't sign off on you, if you don't meet certain, or the certain criteria, certain parameters, we can't take you. There's, it's insurance fraud. And insurances are finding more and more reasons to say, why can't you go in a vehicle? Why can't you go in a wheelchair van? Why can't you go in alternative means? Which is the right thing to do. The problem is that we're in a rural area and there's not a ton of services that, especially after hours, weekends, it's hard to sort of move those patients. So, we're wrestling with that as well, and trying to find creative solutions with some of the partners around town to try to get those patients moved. It's a, it's interesting.
Questions, comments from the board?
Do you have a, just a rough estimate or a number that you use, what it costs you to roll to a scene or something? I mean, do you figure, figure, I mean, all your overhead and all that sort of stuff?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is it $500 or...
No, I did this, I did that, I did that last year, Art. I have not done it for 2017 yet, or a year to date. I don't have that number off the top of my head, I'm sorry, but we can do that, absolutely. The, where, I believe what we worked out last year, I don't know the specific numbers, but for us, it ended up that every time we went out the door, we were losing $33. If you average it over the course of, everything for the year, so every time we went out the door, we were losing $33, excuse me, $33. I think it rolled up a little bit closer to 34 at one point when we were measuring it, but...
You bill Medicare or insurance when there is a transport, is that right?
Correct, yes, sir.
And you bill it by the mile or by the...
Yeah, so the billing structure is like everything in EMS and healthcare. Of course, it's not straightforward and easy to understand. So, there's three factors that go into that. It's, one is the, there's a loading fee, so it's sort of like the, to put you in the ambulance is a single charge. And that is based on the level of care that you get. So, if you have an EMT level crew or a paramedic level crew or advanced EMT level crew, three different rates. So, you get that amount, and then you get a load and mile charge. So, think of, I hate to use a taxi analogy, but that's the easiest way to do it, is that every load and mile, you're charged. Now, where it gets complicated is that for miles 1 through 17, there's one rate, and then for 18 to 30, there's another rate, and then there's from 30 plus, there's a whole nother rate.
Where does that come from?
Where does that come from?
Yeah, these different rates.
Our rate, the charge rate stays the same, but what insurers will pay, so Medicare, I'm totally making these numbers off the top of my head, but they'll say for miles 1 through 17, we're going to pay you $8 a mile. For miles 17 through 30, we're going to pay you $650 a mile. And then for miles 30 and above, we're going to pay you $425 a mile.
Makes sense, because...
So, there's that there's...
Certain overheads that you've got to cover anyways.
Yes, exactly.
The more miles you put. So, so the average, maybe this is, the average charge removing somebody, do you usually get $500, $800?
Oh, no, 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 no. It depends on who their insurer is.
Yes.
I would say for Medicaid patients...
That's the bottom, obviously.
I would say it's the bottom. I would say it's the, their reimbursement is less than optimal.
Okay.
Let's use that terminology. Their reimbursement is maybe a couple hundred bucks.
Okay.
Once again, I'd use, depending on the level of care.
I understand.
Medicare is a little bit higher than that. And then the other insurances fall on a spectrum, and then some of your, like your blue crosses and your MVPs and those type of things usually pay, depending on what your codepay and your individual plan is, 80, 90, sometimes 100% of our charges.
And the charge could be $300 or $400?
Yeah, and depending on where you're going, like if you go to Albany, it might be $800, $900.
Oh, yes, but just around there.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Okay, just trying to get an idea.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Those are the ones that you can bill for.
Right, I understand. I understand.
David, you had an interesting way of looking at what we're paying compared to the total calls figure.
Yeah, I spent a lot of time going through the things that Forrest had sent us. I was just looking at your 911 response for last year that we got today, and just dividing Bennington's contribution by their number of 911 responses, which was 3164, and ours by our 911 responses. Last year, Bennington actually was contributing like twice. It would come out to like $65 compared to $32 per 911 call from our contributions. So, I was just looking at it, because I was, we really had a lot of questions until I looked at it in this aspect, that if we went to the $15,000, we're bringing it closer to what Bennington, if you just look at just the community appropriation you're talking about, or in our case, the budget line, it actually brings us up to what Bennington is contributing, if you look at it in the same context there. Bennington's calls are so much more, like you just take Bennington's 207...
Yep.
...divided by the 3164...
About the number of calls.
Yeah, the 911 calls you sent us today.
Yep.
And it comes up to one number. If you take ours, contribution divided by our 911 calls, it comes up about half. So, the 15, if we go to 15 this year, it makes it about equal. Of course, you can never predict what next year, how many calls each town is going to have, but it's certainly going to, the average for the last three years are pretty close.
And the number of transports in Bennington is higher.
Yes.
So...
Yeah, I saw that, because I had asked you about that earlier, because he had the two different numbers. We have the 56, 58, 40, and 16, and 36, 19 were 911, so a lot more transports.
But we're running close to 50% of the time when it comes to Shas...
But we're running close to 50% of the time when it comes to Shakespeare, we're not actually taking anyone.
Yeah, but it's just the, because I know how it goes, you can get a call for anything and come there and the, you know, the chest pain turns into, you know, a hangnail and you know, you're not doing anything. But it's the nature of it, that's what happens a lot.
Absolutely.
But if you're just looking at it as a per call thing, the 15,000, I didn't think was out of line. It kind of equals it up to the 911 response call rate here.
Yeah, it's working, yeah, it's getting, it's, I believe it's the right amount of what you guys proposed last year, sort of making progress towards sort of our original ask and doing.
Because I was trying to move it away from, because you do get into all this billing factors and what everything turns into.
Yeah.
If you're just looking for it as a pure, and forget about transports, non-emergency stuff, if you look at it as, you get a 911 call, you come up here with a different contribution rates of the two towns, moving to 15 would make our per call contribution rate very much closer to Bennington's.
Want to look into that, that's it.
Well, it's difficult with a little town, with a populated town like this, because if you have one or two high utilizers that move.
Yeah.
Your call line could go down drastically, or you have a high utilizer within your town and your call line could go up. If somebody, if somebody does 911 30 times and it, and over the course of the year, your numbers are going to go crazy.
Oh, yeah.
You know, where, that's what's harder when you're only doing three, how many 911 calls did we have, you know, 200?
Well, we had 228.
200, 228, you know, versus the 3,000 mark, you know.
Yeah. Well, that's where if you do away with the idea of, just for this calculation, just to look at kind of equity in the contribution, you know, you're responding a rig up here. You know, a lot of that overhead is covered regardless because it's going to be there, the crew's going to be paid. So if you just look at it as coming up here, you responded up here, whether it's transported or not, you're going to get compensated different from the insurance companies if you run the people down there. So I'm just looking at it as trying to make the actual responses equal from this community appropriation point of view. Now, going forward, I think there's a lot of questions. Tony's on the board and a lot of this stuff can be discussed going forward, the transports and everything, but.
Sure, sure.
We're a tad behind when I do this calculation.
It was interesting to me to learn that you're working proactively to reduce the number of 911 calls and intervening with the chronic users.
Yes.
That there are people that call who really need intervention and are much more aggressive medical and psychological as opposed to a regular 911 call.
Sure.
So that's going to reduce your, your numbers, but in reality, you're also doing an incredible medical job and being very proactive in that way. And that never gets translated into these numbers.
It's very difficult. And, and as you know, especially on the financial side, if we're proactively working to keep people from calling 911 and from going to the ED, that directly affects both our number of calls and two, our bottom line.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's not a, there's not a funding mechanism for that yet.
No.
It's coming, but it's not, not there yet.
And it's a medical service that you can't bill for.
And it's the right thing for the patient.
Oh, yeah, oh, sure.
Patients are better off at home in an environment that they are familiar with and hopefully living, living healthy and not.
Yeah.
All right, well, that's where we are right now, at least for the moment, where our first proposal on the table is to double last year's funding to 15,000. And then going forward, I'm sure we'll be back with you again next year.
Absolutely. And as always, the offer's always on the table. If there's data you want us to dig into, don't call me on the Monday before select board meeting, but if you can give us a week or so, depending on what we have going on, we have no problem digging in or trying to splice the data in any way that we can. Obviously with certain privacy concerns, but otherwise, we can dig into the aggregate data, you know, without a, without problem.
Good. All right. Thank you.
Thank you all. Kind of Merry Christmas if I don't see you.
Merry Christmas.
Christmas Eve.
Back to the roads report.
Back to the roads report.
Snowed.
Snowed.
We had a bit of overtime in the nature of the way the snow's been coming down and having to move it and then having to go back out. Of course, our first one was over the weekend, so they spent a long time out last Saturday, had to come back out on Sunday. They were out a little late tonight because some of the back roads and the hills over here were getting icy. They want some material on the road because it's going to start raining and then we're going to get into more ice, so we have consumed some overtime so far, but we've had little spikes like this. You know, this is most of the time we get a storm and plow it off and move on, but this just kept happening in different segments, so it got a little high this week. We have a new pickup truck in service, which is convenient because the Dodge, the other Dodge broke down with its, I think it had something to do, I forget, something to do with the emission systems, the DEF system, they had to put it in, and so it had to go back to Stevens over in Green to be repaired, and that's not back yet.
I thought it was a town in North Bennington.
Yeah, yeah, North Bennington helped us out this morning with a sander because of course the pickup truck doesn't have a sander yet, and my favorite vehicle, the Ford, is in the garage and should be back tomorrow, so.
What is that done, scheduled, we replaced Dave?
Oh, flatback. Not for a long time.
The 550?
Yeah, it's not even paid off yet.
I thought that, I thought everything was paid off.
No, no, we have another two years before everything's paid off. Yeah, we, the Dodge, the Dodge and the Volvo were bought at the same time, I think.
Yeah.
And I think they're paid off next year, fiscal '19. And then that, then that's it. Fiscal '19 is it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that means it's only four, this will be four years old. I mean, it has to go for a while. And it's had a number of issues, but a lot of it is the electrical system in it. Even there's the spreader and everything, it's all, it's all electrical and it's really not the way to do it because it gets eaten alive, it's all, so. We're working on it, they'll be back. But again, that was the point of getting the used truck last year and.
Is that working on?
Yeah, the used truck is great. You know, it's, went from a school parking lot to doing the paved roads here and it works great. The Ford has had its issues, but it still serves a function when it comes back in the garage. And the Dodge, at some point, will have this thing corrected, but like I said, it's only four years old. We have a lot of money into it, I think it was like $98,000 when we bought it, so we're going to have to deal with its little issues for a while. What we had discussed last year and we didn't get to, but it also looks like a better deal is swapping the body from the 550, the Ford, onto the Dodge so that it will sand properly and it'll be mechanical instead of electric. And then the older truck will have this utility body on it, so. And that's only like $13,000 to do that.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Because you've got a good pickup now.
Yeah.
For throwing jackhammers and sort of stuff.
Yeah, for everything else. And then the Ford goes back to what I was just going to have it hanging around to be is the utility vehicle, that you can plow on and you can throw the sand on in a pinch. It'll do the parks, all this little running around stuff for several years, hopefully. But then the Dodge would have a body that would function for the next five or six years at least, all we have.
Yeah.
You know, and by that time, that body will be shot too, so.
Oh, just a comment, this afternoon I noticed that like Horton Hill, which is a, kind of like a throughway because it was the top of Twitchell Hill and up to Shakespeare Hollow, that wasn't sanded, but all the side roads were. Madison, Madison Road and, and Euro Road were sanded quite well, but Horton Hill was, it wasn't slick, but it, there wasn't any sand on it. So I didn't know what the procedure was.
I believe.
Does the same truck do it all or?
No. Horton Hill, I believe the truck goes up Daniels, up Horton Hill, then up into the hollows and that.
Yes, that's the way it usually is.
Yeah.
And it's usually a tandem.
Yeah, it's usually, it is a tandem.
So most of the smaller ones does the side roads and?
Yeah, I believe one of the single axes does those roads.
So Ron just came back in, so he probably just.
He probably just done it now, yeah, yeah.
I just thought it was kind of funny that the main road was.
Yeah, well, usually, you know, it depends, he goes up, but he wants, might have wanted to wait when he got up to the end of the hollow to make sure he got back.
Okay, just, I didn't know all that.
V-Trans was slow in this, this storm.
Yes, it was slow over the weekend too.
They must be short.
I, I don't know. I don't know. I know there was, I wasn't here, but I know that people were having trouble like north of Manchester.
Yeah.
Coming down the hill and across 1130.
A lot of the roads are 911.
I heard a lot of stuff around here too.
Yeah.
I don't know, I've had times where I've come down 7A to come here and looked on our roads and I'm like going down 7A very cautiously through a lot of snow and our roads are plowed off.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's a staffing thing or just a state policy. I know they, like everybody, they're looking for money and they have budget issues, which we do too, but I think they must have cut back or something.
They must have.
Yeah, I don't see, they, they used to do the pre-treatment too, and I haven't seen that.
Nothing was done.
You say, you used to see them on 7 and 7A all the time, I don't see them anymore either. So they might be just cutting back because that actually did work.
For the brine?
Yeah, the brine, yeah, yeah.
Is it, is it still a policy, Dave, during the week when Beckham is open, to use unsalted sand when the temperature's above freezing?
I will check with Steve. We have our pile back here.
Yeah.
I would think if we have during the week, if Beckham's is open and we want to sand something, that we could do it that way.
Well, the unsalted sand, if it's above freezing, it's going to work better anyway. It'll stay on top and then when it gets cold again, it'll freeze there. If you use the salted sand, it'll go down to it.
Yeah, I'd, I'd really have to check with Steve on that.
Besides being three times as expensive.
Yeah, yeah, when you ever you mix the salt in it, you're definitely pushing the price up.
Yep, okay.
I'll, I'll ask about that.
All right, more on roads. Okay, moving on, item 10 is FD capital improvement. I don't even know what FD stands for.
Fire Department.
Golly. I caught myself.
Very good. Grats growing.
The fire chief sent me, they have, if you remember last year, we were discussing the capital improvements in placing the windows in the buildings. So what, what they are going to do is they are going to purchase the windows themselves separately than these proposals they receive. That way, if the fire department buys them directly, there's no tax and anything else like that, and they can get a better price. The chief forwarded me three bids they, quotes they had received, the low quote being for 9540 to do all the work on the firehouse, which includes removing and disposing the old windows, minor reframing, installing the windows, trimming the exterior and interior, insulating around the windows, staining the windows and trim, and three coats of polyurethane. And that one came in at 9540. The fire chief is just looking for approval from the board to move forward with the process.
That's the bid that he wants to go with?
The low bid, yes. I haven't had that confirmed. He sent me these and he hasn't gotten back to me yet, but I assume out of the three, that's the one he wants to go with. We can put this on hold and check, but, yeah, he hasn't gotten quite back to me. The other two are higher, so I'm assuming.
Can you tell us the numbers and submitted bid or the quote?
Facto construction, excuse me, $10,950. Shore construction, 9540, and Brett, Brett mold or mold, construction, $10,140. That's all, I wasn't part of soliciting these, so I don't know a lot about it. I couldn't get in touch with Joe for him to be here to explain these tonight, so I'm not sure if he wanted these to go completely forward, to let the board know that they're moving forward, they're looking to do this in January, buy the windows in January.
Okay.
We could probably revisit this in the beginning of January if he knows we'll approve one of them.
This is in their budget, isn't it?
Yeah, this is a budget item for them.
So let them do it. I don't think they need our approval, it's in the budget.
I think what Joe normally does is he just likes, you know, presents the board.
I think he's just informing us that he's got.
Yeah, yeah.
His interest, his interest, it's in the budget.
Yep, because we did approve all this last year to the windows.
Previous boards have put him through the wringer on getting quotes for things, so he's probably just remembering that.
Yeah, the quotes are important because he has to stay by the purchasing policy.
Sure.
Right, but those are all close enough that he can, we're fine with all of those, so he can pick the one he likes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. That's it for that one. The next one is the budget, which, the last piece of the budget was the discussion this evening. Made some minor tweaks here and there, but it's not going to be much different than what we had discussed a couple of weeks ago. We leave this in. Like I said, I read a lot of what they said, read a lot of what's on their webpage, Bennington Rescue.
You got to explain to me what you were comparing us with Bennington, I didn't quite.
Well, you know, to go through all the financials and everything, I just.
No, I just.
I just went down through, through the individual contributions they asked for last year. They asked for 207,000 from Bennington. So getting rid of all the transports, they had 31, they had 3,164 911 calls. So if you just divide the, the appropriation of 207,000 by the 911 calls, it came out to 6557 a call.
Okay.
If you take our 7,500 and divide it by our 228 911 calls, our contribution was 3289 per call. So if we go to 15,000 and the numbers, which this would be three years in a row where they're at the same, our contribution would be $66 per call and theirs is 63. So, I mean, it makes it more equitable for us.
Sure.
For them, you know.
So where did they come up with the current per capita EMS funding? Were they using?
1213 per person?
Yes.
Yeah, they divide the total by the population of the three towns.
Using which number, 7,500 or?
No, no, they're using 2,400 in the entire budget.
They're used, that number would be if we got to the 40,000 that he wants, then our per capita contribution would be $12.
It's a whole different way of looking at it.
Yeah, it's two completely separate ways of looking at it. And one of the problems with doing it on per capita is, is the consumption of services is far higher in Bennington than it is here.
That's right, that's been my problem.
And then that's why, when, when I got the numbers for actual 911 calls.
Yes.
I was just thinking, well, an easier way to look at that is they, 911 calls, they respond. And I totally agree with what Forrest was saying. You get repeat calls that, but it's still the responding 911. Forget about all the transport stuff, which is another topic that the board can discuss about where to go with that, because I read their, their plans for the future and their mission statement and all that, and maybe some of that needs to be re-adressed, but if you just stick to 911, if we, this would make us somewhat equitable when the phone rings and they drive up here, it's the same as the phone rings per call in Bennington. Because we don't, per capita, we are never going to consume the services much as Bennington does. It just won't happen. And in three years, we're hanging around 220, and they're always up in the 3,000. So it just makes it a little bit more equitable.
Okay.
I mean, he has a lot of funding problems and I agree, and come January 1st, he's going to have a lot more funding problems, but I guess we can revisit that next year because they, they're all, they're all having the same problem. It's all Medicare. I read his thing and I read, actually, he's spent a part of today reading the Medicare funding charts for this, and, you know, he's absolutely right, it's all over the place. That, again, made me think, there has to be a simpler way just for us to evaluate this because the distances involved and everything, it's not, it's not, not a one-off on each other. So just look at straight, if they get a call and they drive up here, let's look at it that way.
Yes, okay.
And that'll make it a little bit more equitable for this year, and we'll see, see where they stand next year, I mean, with the changes, the potential changes that could come, uh, who knows?
Yeah, okay, that, that, the way you explained it makes sense now.
It was, it was a brilliant way of doing it, I mean, it was just a total switch.
Yeah.
In looking at it, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, it's just straightforward that way, you know?
Yeah, straightforward, you know, the other thing is that we've talked about at the rest of the board meeting, is that people don't understand that they have a choice, that you can ask to be transported by the Bennington Rescue Squad, and our hope is that as the towns kick in, that people ask for that service, because right now, it's not guaranteed at, at the medical center.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they'll just give you to whomever is there at that time, just to get rid of you.
Correct.
To get you out of the hospital.
And it, it used, you know, back, back when I started doing this stuff, it used to be that they're not gonna get reimbursed for that correctly, you know, because Medicare and Medicaid aren't gonna pay them for it.
Yeah.
And it's, it pretty much says that in part, parts of the Medicare thing, too, so, it's, there's a lot of issues in this, and they're only gonna get more complicated, so I was trying to reduce it to a, a straightforward formula that we could base it on something, and just simply driving up here, and I know they have repeats here and lots of refusals, but you drove up, you had an emergency response here, so we'll look at it that way.
Mm-hmm, good, good. All right, item twelve, uh, talking about ballot articles that we're proposing to put before the voters.
I'll start with, with one if I can, they, we're, we're retrenching in the lister's office, we're, we're having the discussion again to perhaps postpone this a year, to give time for the current appraiser to settle in.
Let's, uh, let's explain to people what we're talking about.
Sorry, yeah, yeah, sorry, we, we were having this conversation, uh, two years ago, the listers approached me, uh, about this, these, the state now allows to, town to put an article on the ballot at town meeting to eliminate the lister's office and hire an assessor.
Basically what we're doing now.
Basically what we're doing now.
Okay.
Uh, at the time, the, the listers were all in favor of it, uh, Jim was, Jim was going to be it, unfortunately, Jim passed away shortly thereafter, so it went on hold last year as we went through all this, uh, it came up again this year, and, uh, we thought we'd go through with it, but I was having a talk with them just this morning, and they were kind of thinking maybe they'd like to wait a year to make sure that Barb is, is set and in, uh, so we're gonna have another discussion on Wednesday before we decide whether we want to move forward with it this year. I did a check with Garrett up at, uh, VLCT, one of the state attorneys, because the law that allows you to do this states specifically assessor, and, and Barb is an appraiser, but in other sections of the law, appraiser and assessor is used interchangeably, and as long as the property evaluation department approves Barb, which they have, they recommended it to us, then it's not a problem, so, uh, the issue now is, the, the listers, uh, may, may want to stay another year to make sure the transition is smooth, because Barb did just start, I mean, they, they kind of have a point, so, and it is their office, so...
So if, if that's voted in, then the town saves some money because, uh, we aren't paying a lister to sit here Mondays and Wednesdays?
Well, what we would do originally, in, in our original conversation of it, was that, uh, the current listers would, would stay as assistants, uh, to provide backup for Barb as she gets her feet, you know, set, so this would be postponing the vote now for a year, just leaving the system the way it is, and then maybe next year bring this up, uh, they were for it, now they're kind of rethinking it, I kind of see their point, maybe we'll just have to wait another year.
So there, if this were to pass, uh, in a couple of years, that means there, there would be no lister here, no, no lister appointed or selected by the people here to, to...
Correct, there would just be the assessor.
And so if they came in and they have a question, Barb would have, Barb would handle it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And she's, she's very good, we've had, you know, Jim was good, uh, Chris, who was here, was, was extremely knowledgeable, uh, and part of the problem with, with the listing process now is it's becoming more and more complicated, and I have the large manual of how to do it down on my desk, if anybody wants to...
I can imagine.
...to read it, but, and it just gets more complicated, and, and it requires, uh, uh, you know, the, the broader exposure you get to, that's why you have people like Jim and people like Chris who were doing this in three or four towns, because this was their profession, and you just get used to all the intricacies and into the different variations of things, and you have to keep up on all the different bulletins that come out from PVR and everything, and, uh, it's, it's kind of the way to go, and a lot of towns have trouble finding people to be listers, now, we've had three that have been the listers for years here.
Yeah, I know.
But, uh...
And, and I think, I think we're lucky because they, they always volunteer.
Yes.
They, they seem to know the system very well, and, and I'm just concerned that people won't have that experience if they come in to see Barb, that's...
Yeah, and I think that's one reason why, uh, the initial enthusiasm this round, uh, kind of is, like, maybe we should put a break for a year.
And, and is Barb hired by us or, or voted in?
Barb is a town employee, yes.
So, okay, so we're going away from the citizens electing who they want to be their listers as, and letting the selectmen hire, it's a change, isn't it?
Yeah, it is, and we can't hire anyone who isn't previously approved by property evaluation, uh, which, like Barb is, like Chris was, and...
Sure.
I mean, that's how we find these people, because there's a small, it's a small pool out there that, uh...
But practically, the, the situation is that the lister's office has been run by the appraiser for...
Oh, yes.
Yeah, for quite a while, and, uh, the, the listers take their cues from the appraiser, because he's a, a professional with a lot of experience in the computer mapping and the appraising and all of that sort of stuff, so, um, but I don't think we should expect that we're gonna save any money.
No, I, I, no, I, that, I did say, I did say that, but that was my point.
Yeah, although they want a raise.
Yeah.
So I don't blame them, because they've been getting ten dollars an hour forever, I think, I think they'd like to get eleven or twelve.
I think we could probably do that, but it's, uh... It's like everything else, you know, with, with parks and with the water department, uh, you know, you can't find people that are willing to essentially volunteer for those jobs anymore, so you have to move to professionals to do it.
We've been awful lucky.
Yes.
And of course, and technically, the, the people that are elected aren't qualified anyways, right?
No.
The, there's no, uh, getting elected does not mean you know how to run the GIS system, correct?
That's my point, yeah, that's right.
That's why there's a number of bills that come up repeatedly, like the treasurer, for instance, that comes up repeatedly in Montpelier, to allow towns to hire a, a treasurer or financial manager in lieu of, uh, an elected official, only because, uh, you know, there's a, there's a certain caliber of expertise you need with it, and, uh, you know, as you get into bigger towns, this could be a problem if someone with absolutely no financial knowledge gets elected to treasurer.
That's on a pop, on a popular vote.
Yeah, you could, you could get in pretty, indeed, pretty quickly, you know, so...
So, but all this would have to be voted on by the...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
By the townspeople, right?
Yep, yeah, this is...
So it'd take a lot of explaining with that.
It would take a lot of explaining, and as I said, right now, uh, we're gonna continue the conversation on Wednesday, we have to mid-January if we go with this article, but I don't think we're gonna see it this year now, I, I thought for sure last week we were ready.
I don't think we got time to explain it properly either.
Yeah.
Well, we've got till March.
Till March, but still, yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
We, we could, uh...
We'll see what they say.
You know, it, it's one of those things where I don't think we've suffered a lot if it, if it goes down to defeat either, it's, uh...
Sure.
But certainly, we want the listers on board, where we're not gonna yank their jobs out for us or something.
Absolutely, whatever they want.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and then the other one was, uh, technical detail with cemetery funds, we found what might be a, uh, a defective process relative to one of our reserve funds on the, uh, relative to cemeteries, and we wanted to move, uh, those funds into our general cemetery fund, am I saying that right?
Uh, well, actually, what we had is, uh, for years now, we've been putting money into a cemetery reserve fund, the cemetery reserve fund has a flaw in the way it was, 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 uh, created, uh, this is simply to, to correct that and call it a cemetery capital, uh, project reserve fund, the money, it's just asking the voters to approve the money that's in the cemetery reserve fund to move it into a cemetery capital project reserve fund, it clarifies a procedural error, but right now, uh, it isn't properly, uh, wasn't properly created, so it's, it's just, it's just an oversight that happened years back that frankly we stumbled across, but it's a technical issue that should be corrected legally, it's not a big deal, it's, it's money to fix the fence or buy other things for the cemeteries, it's not a big deal.
We have a history of the voters being pretty responsive to those kinds of things, so I think if we lay it out in the, in the meeting, in, in the banner, that, uh, they won't be okay with that one. Okay, Town Garage Transportation Project, we are close to being ready to put bid documents out.
Yeah, soon.
All these documents were circulated in the last week, David, you had some comments that, uh, you made relative to those, uh, th- these are the, uh, the documents for the RFP, the Request for Proposal.
Yes.
And this is, uh, over a hundred pages of documents just to, uh, put the thing out to bid.
Yeah.
We haven't got to the good stuff.
Yeah, yeah, we're not even getting close to that, we did make some corrections, we asked for them to make some corrections and clarifications, uh, there are some, some, there's an old well by the water department, uh, that is going to be sealed and removed, uh, it's right in the middle of where we have to go, um, and then the, there was an old monitoring well two, which was just to the south of the Madison Well, that we're also closing, now we're gonna close monitoring well two also, uh, this is all proof, I was on the phone with DEC today and KES to, to change this, uh, I asked our engineer, they hadn't marked monitoring well one and four, which is to the west of the new transfer station.
So, so...
Yeah, so what we want to do with monitoring well four, monitoring well four will now be used for testing again, uh, or at least be available for testing, it hasn't been used in years to test, but because we want to move the one off by the water department and eliminate that one, and eliminate monitoring well two, which also hasn't been used in years, but we, we're gonna use four as the test well for that area, uh, monitoring well two may very well be right on the corner of the building, so it's, it, we don't use it now, they don't use it now, I should say, it's not required, it's part of our program, and four can be opened again if, if we need to, for testing, and the state's on board with that, we're rewriting the, uh, the, uh, post-closure plan now to reflect that.
Would you please check with the state to find out if, when we do drill a well, that services the garage, and if it comes up with PFOA in it, if the state mandates that we put a PoE system in, or can we say we will not drink it?
It's mandated, we've already had this discussion, if the well tests PFOAs, we will put a PoE on it, and, uh, it'll be, they actually are, the discussion today was they will probably test that on a regular basis, uh, just like any other well in the area, uh, the, the system itself...
That, that's something they said recently, that they would require that we put a PoE on it, because when this was evaluated by the, by previous administration, uh, what, four or five years ago, uh, it was, we had unofficial approval that we could put a bubbler in if there were any kind of problems, this was pre-PFOA.
This was pre-PFOA, this has changed the dynamic.
Yeah.
Uh, I think, I think from, when all this was talked about, yeah, PFOAs weren't on the horizon, now they've become this, this gigantic issue, and I think if it's there, it might be a prudent course for us to do it, even if it wasn't required by the state. The initial cost is a few thousand dollars, and as we're gonna be there for seventy years, it's, over time, it's minimal, minimal.
So if you're hitting the water just to wash trucks and keep maintaining things like that around here, um, can you just list it as non-potable water?
Well, we can, we can address that as the time comes if we wanna, uh, to, to me, in the scope of the whole project, the, the, the outlay is, is real minimal, uh, for a PoE, uh...
Let's keep in mind, we haven't drilled a well yet.
Yeah, we haven't even drilled a well yet, before we get...
Yeah, and it's...
It could be, but it will be tested regularly anyway, it's, we're part of the testing regime anyway, so...
Yeah, let's worry about that.
One of my concerns about a PoE is that you may not get the flow of water that you'd like to have for pressure...
Yeah, yeah, it is a liquid complaint.
Trucks and that sort of stuff.
Well, yeah, I, the one, the one thing for sure is as soon as it's drilled, it's, uh, it's being tested for everything.
Yeah.
And then we can take, take it up from there, maybe we can do as simple as what Joe said, it's non-potable.
Yep.
Maybe we can have a pipe that goes around the PoE system.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll worry about that.
Yeah, okay.
Um, you had one of your things that you noticed, David, that I wasn't sure I understood about where, um, how much is flowing, how much drainage is flowing to where?
When, on, on one of the civil diagrams, there's, there's a series of drains that come across and then run across the entire parking lot, and the outflow is by MW four, and if those drains, I was concerned that those drains might be floor or ground drains outside the apron of the garage, that would then collect any oil or any other spill that's in the garage, and then be depositing that by MW four, uh, but the drains, they got back from me today, drains are solely from the roof drains, they'll come down alongside the building and go on the ground, so that it'll just be rainwater being deposited over there, I just didn't want any possibility of any thing...
Contaminating it.
Yeah, going, going near, near one of our test wells.
Yeah, the, the, the floor drain in the garage is gonna go get collected right outside.
That's collected right outside.
Yeah.
But where these were, not being an engineer, the way they had them drawn, I just want to make sure, is this drain, because it's supposed to be a roof drain, but I look at it, it kind of looks like a ground drain, it's like, okay, these are all connecting and then running right out of MW four, so I just want to make sure that there's nothing on the ground headed that way, it's just from the roof.
Keep it away from there altogether.
Uh, I, I could ask, it's an awfully long way, that this water's going as it is, but...
Yeah, you know, I'm just thinking, whatever falls out of the sky...
Yeah, just send it the other direction where it doesn't matter.
Yeah, get it away from that test well, I'm serious, I mean, because the next thing, rainwater is toxic getting in.
Reaching right in, but...
Yeah.
I wanted to ask you a question on, to back it up to the beginning, you said about sealing and removing wells?
Yes.
So what's that look like, how do you do, I mean...
There's a, right in the state law, there's a whole procedure that has to be followed by a licensed plumber to, uh, seal each well, and, uh, take them out of commission, it's a whole list of things that have to be done, and I just leave it up to them.
When you said seal it and remove, I was like, why don't you just remove it?
Yeah, yeah.
Fill it with concrete.
Yeah, it has to be filled with concrete, and it has to be certain type, and, uh, it has to be filled with certain depth and all this stuff, and the one by the water department is, is almost like a bunker there, you know, and then I didn't realize that they have a, a pressure tank on it, there's a heater down there, it's all powered up, and, uh, it's kind of like weird, it's just been there for so long, but it's, it's, uh, right to the front of the salt shed, right where the trucks would be turning, and there's no way to leave that there, and there's no reason to leave it there, so it's, just has to go. It serves no purpose anyway, other than they test it periodically, and we'll just use MW four or one of the ones down along Airport Road as a supplement, so...
The thing that I noticed in reading the documents is we have, um, decided to ask for a bid on the maintenance garage and a separate bid on the transfer station work in the event that our crew has a rough mud season and doesn't have time to do that, and the thing that seemed to be missing in my mind from the specifications is where do we draw that line, uh, the, the transfer station's only referred to as a thing that I could find in the, just the form, the bid form, where you write in your, your number for how many dollars you're gonna charge to do the project, so it seems to me like, uh, Goldstone needs, or MSK needs to help us in defining that a little better.
In, in the engineering documents, the, the engineering documents for the garage section are separate than the transfer station section, uh, well, at least they used to be, so that would be the defining difference of it for, for the contractor, the ad alternative would, would only be, um, I mean, hopefully, the GC who puts in for the garage is going to have the competitive bid for the transfer station, because ideally, what you, because I, just for an aside for a moment, I did check with DEC about a temporary transfer station, because it'd be a, use my language carefully, be much easier to build this front to back, but it turns out that no one has ever been issued a temporary transfer station permit in this state, so we would have to apply for a whole new permit to have three containers in a compact or somewhere, so, uh, yeah, they actually took some time, too, they couldn't believe it themselves, but...
Well, my concern is that if we don't define that carefully, uh, we may get a, a garage, uh, built, and then, uh, you know, somebody doesn't do part of it, and they said, well, we, that was the transfer station, we wouldn't, we didn't bid on that, so I think we need to have that spelled out.
Yeah, so we'll see what they, they say.
I mean, we, this is a document that thought it necessary to define the word provide, so...
If we're getting down to that little, little detail, I think we better...
If we're getting down to that little detail, I think we better be clear on what is transfer station and what is garage. So, we'll wait to hear what Goldstone has to say in response to that.
And the other part I pointed out in, in the add addendums was they had a couple of things backwards. The one was the gravel, which, which was the finished gravel for just the garage area because the transfer station has to be finished. We can finish the garage area surface coating ourselves afterwards if we need to save that money. And there was a misidentification in the transfer station add-on too. I don't remember that off the top of my head, but they corrected that also.
So, does somebody, so there's going to be a date when these are available? And do they pick them up at Goldstone or do they pick them up here?
Yes. Everyone, everything has to go through Goldstone. They all have to be signed out there. And, because I had a contractor ask me again last week, I reminded them that all this documents will be at Goldstone. GCs will pick it up. Any local contractor, electrician, plumber, carpenter, whatever, can go to Goldstone and find out what GCs picked up copies so that they can get in touch with those GCs and try and, you know, put a bid in with them.
So, so you'll let us know when that...
Yes, and, yeah, that'll be in early January.
Okay.
Which is why we try to wrap this up as quickly as possible because it still has to be printed out from the AIA forms and get the whole package together. One other thing I did, I ran this all by our insurance carriers again, and everything in addendum B of this thing is everything they want, so... And Merrill, our attorney, looked it over, and every change she wanted is in there. So, we're, we're pretty much set to go except for these, Tim's question and anything else that comes up. But I would think by the end of this week, the question should be done and we go to print and get this, get this on the...
Wait for the really big document to come in, the contract on the garage.
It's a lot of documents.
Okay, is that it for Town Garage?
Yes.
Okay. E-911, so you're really digging into this, are you?
Well, we have, we have to be proactive and protective of the town.
We said we wanted you to make, fix Mr. Moffitt's.
Yeah, I can't do things that simply. You know, the way the state is phrasing this, we, they've determined that we have a problem that, that many of us don't see and some other towns don't, but we have to address this somewhat proactively. And they, they feel that even these things off 780 up behind, if you familiar with where Dave Mans's property is, the, the trail essentially that he's up there needs a name. All those camps up there need numbers. So, what I've decided, the best hack for the town in this, because we can do, we can do Mr. Moffitt's, but Mr. Moffitt wants to rename the road. So, we need, we need to get other people's input on assigning a name to the road. And then name is more traditional than really an official name. What is it called? Sleepy Hollow.
Sleepy Hollow.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't, it isn't really documented anywhere. So, he's already said he would like a different name, but there's the other nine people up both forks of that. So, we have to rename one fork of it, rename Sleepy Hollow. But all these other people up there all need to be notified of what we're talking about. So, what I've asked Shelley to do, and I gave her some, some outlines for it, is to...
I have a thought. That camp is not a permanent camp.
Yes, my argument exactly with the state. I've had this argument with them. What I, what I'm aiming for now is to address letters to all the camp owners, get the objections back, which I assume many of them are going to object to. A, having their trail named, B, having to post a number by the camp.
Right.
And everything else.
But doesn't, doesn't that in itself make those permanent structures, which is illegal?
Which is part of the argument. And what I want to do is take that, our objections, go around this gentleman who says we have to do this, and write an appeal to the 911 board and say, I, I just don't understand his ruling on this. He keeps, I offer to do everything because I can do it on my computer. I can measure off from 780 to the midpoint in all these properties and sign numbers. So, at least they'd have a general idea. You could go up there with your GPS and say, okay, I'm in the woods near this guy. Now, try and find him. But I, I agree. So, you know, people have camps because they don't want to pan their mailboxes out.
Exactly.
And they're camped today. They drove in this way this year. Well, maybe next year they're going to come in this way.
Another way.
Where am I going to, where am I going to put numbers? Who's going to put numbers up? Who's going to leave the signs up on these roads?
This is not what we signed on for. We thought we would do Mr. Moffitt a courtesy and change his 911 address to the number that he wanted. And now, he wants us to change the name of the street, which requires that we notify everybody on the street.
This is now mountain rescue as opposed to 911.
Yeah. You've got, you've got a garage. We don't need you to...
But it's, it's the paperwork process because I, you know, Shelley is always great at doing this, and it's kind of a side project. It's winter, so there's nothing real pressing with it right now. But I, we, we have to make some, some progress towards it or we could find ourselves in a bind by, by not addressing what the state has told us they think we should do, or this gentleman in the state has told us he thinks we should do. Because I read the law still. I'm like, these aren't buildings.
Yeah, no, this is a bigger problem than, the state's got a problem or somebody needs to figure out that when you've got a, a landlocked piece of property, 1,000 feet from the road on the side of a mountain, the 911 address is not how you get an ambulance there.
Yeah.
You, you have to radio a GPS coordinate to a helicopter is how you get, get an ambulance there. So, yeah, I think, I think we should stand down on this.
Cell service.
I don't see the, the upside to doing this. Because, I mean, once you've done all this, you're not going to be any closer, you're not going to get that ambulance any closer than you do right now when you drive to the end of the Shasprey Hollow, gets out and starts yelling, who's in trouble?
Yeah, well, that's why I was looking for the, the, my idea with the letters and the responses was to have documentations and objections from the property owners to then just forward as an appeal to the E-911 board going, you know, I think you need to reassess what you're asking here.
Yes.
Because your guy is asking this. We've told him, they're not, in our definition, they're not buildings. They can't, some are very nice, but they are not buildings in the traditional sense.
And he can move that.
And, yeah, most, some, some can be moved. Some are quite substantial, but...
Technically, they could be moved.
Yeah.
And that would change the whole 911 thing.
Yeah, and there's no, there's no access to these anyway. There's not a road.
No.
But I do know they've used, they've used location things to go up to camps to rescue people. I mean, there's a whole system for doing it around here between ATVs and, you know, the ambulance at the head. They've done it over in Glasson Valley here and Sandgate all the time. But I, I agree. It's not, it's not going to occupy a lot of time.
It's not a priority.
It's not a priority. I think we have to keep moving ahead.
What, what we gain from doing this, all, all we do is, is, you know, satisfy some, one guy at the state who thinks camps should be on, on street addresses.
I'm looking just to cover ourselves from...
Yeah, I mean, proceed.
You know, just moving, Mike, you know, step by step ahead because inaction is what kind of comes back sometimes.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm talking inaction. I'm talking like...
Steps. Yeah, this is not, you know...
Because we're, we're in new territory.
Yeah.
And I'm sure the state hadn't even thought about it.
Yeah, and we've called some towns and, and some towns are like, what are you kidding? We wouldn't do that.
No.
And other towns are like, well, yeah, well, all of ours are numbered and you can find them and grid them. And like, seriously? I think we have to find what, who really means what up there.
I mean, until we started poking on this, nobody was poking on us, right?
No, no, when we ask the question, that's the problem. You ask the question, you get, you get the answer you don't want sometimes.
Yeah, if, if the rest of the board wants to send Dave down this road, they can, but I'm, I'm opposed to it.
No, thank you.
Yeah, I think we just put this one on the back burner and when the state calls up and says, do something, then we'll do something. Okay, that takes us to other business. Got any?
Nope. No, I will mention, last year, we talked several times about weight restrictions on roads. We usually wait until it's, somebody's sinking in. Just something we should think about if we want to do it. It's never been done here really in the past.
Wasn't that something Tam had to live up to with weight?
Oh, well, there was some issues down in Palano, I think, but we've never had a problem with it here. And we have all kinds of agricultural uses and logging trucks and everything. And they use various roads. We've not gotten into it before, but I know it seems like last winter, when we got into March, it started coming up, and then, of course, you know, it's, it's over with. So, I just want to throw it out there. If we want to talk about some kind of local restrictions, they have to be followed with the state.
I think the only thing that got a pound of day was like last spring when it went bad. And I think it's already on the books. You can post them.
Well, that's what I mean. If, if we want to discuss, I'll get it out for the next meeting in January. But then I think we need to set what we want to post roads for, have it recorded with the state so that if we need to, we can go out and post them. Once you're already at the point of, well, we should really restrict something here and we don't have something ready to go, we can't do it. But there's issues with it. There's loggers that come up.
There's a lot of issues with it. You got, you got milk trucks and grain trucks that have to go in and that sort of stuff.
Yeah.
Hill trucks, fire trucks.
Yeah.
Isn't the real worry here is the, the logging trucks making shortcuts through town on dirt roads that are soft with mud? Do we have, do we have a problem with that?
No.
We don't log anymore.
Yeah, occasionally we do.
Not like it was yours.
Yeah.
You just don't see log trucks go out of Shasprey Hollow.
I mean, it's, it's occasional. It's not, it's not a big deal. I mean, you have agricultural uses that sometimes they get, they get a little heavy, but you do have fuel, but there's trucks you can't keep out. I mean, fuel trucks.
You want to be careful. Your tandem truck with a load of sand and a wing and a plow is going to be over your limit.
It's going to be way over. We're exempt though. I said fire trucks are exempt.
I know. That's being hypocritical. I mean...
Yeah, oh, I agree. I agree.
To say that, so, I realize we got to go, but if, if it damages the road, that truck damages just as much as anything else.
Most of the time, Dave, you know, the only truck, the only time you're going to get in trouble is when you got repeated trucks by the, by a, a real heavy truck.
And that rarely.
Real heavy trucks like the, the milk trucks and log trucks. They're only going to make, maybe one trip today. You might not save a dent for the week.
I think the most damage done last year was by some delivery truck going up Daniel's Road that had very little mud experience, I would think, and just, just buried himself into it. It was, you know, I think most people around here who are driving these things can navigate down a mud road. I, I'm totally neutral on this. I just brought it up because it's come up. And if we want, if we want to do something, we should do it early, not, not late.
Was it at Myers Road when they had that moving dead last week?
Oh, was it Myers? I thought it had Daniel's mine. I know something ripped up Daniel's.
It was one of those roads. I think it was moving dead though.
Yeah, it was some, it was a box truck. I remember it being a box truck, yeah. But like I said, I'm totally neutral on this, but it was just something that's...
So, what's the consensus? Do we need to do something or no?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Okay, good. So, we can stand down on that one also?
Okay, then that's all, that's all I have.
All right. The only action item I wrote down was to send you the minutes. Previous items have been, have been dealt with or are being dealt with. We're going to, we're waiting on Goldstone to answer a question or two. Oh, you have another conversation with the listers, it sounds like. Anything else that we, we promised we would do?
All right.
Well, in that case, are we ready to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn from Ken?
Second.
Second by Art. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned.